Good afternoon, everyone. I call this November 12th, 2024 zoning meeting of the Burnley County Board of Commissioners to Order. Commissioner Kessada is excused and Commissioner Barboa will be attending via Zoom. We will have a silent invocation and then I will lead the pledge. Please stand and join me in the pledge. Move to announcements and additions or changes. Director Hamm, are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. No changes today. We've got one case for your consideration and we'll proceed as scheduled.
Okay. First, we must approve the minutes. I move approval of the June 11th, 2024 zoning meeting minutes to as.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and we will move with a roll call vote. Please.
Chair Baca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kessada is excused, did I hear you say?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Barboa?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
So called.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the public hearing items and hearing procedures. Director Hamm, please provide the staff presentation before we convene the public hearing, is what I'm seeing here. And Madam Clerk, can you issue a resolution number?
Yes, ma'am. 5A is AR 2024-129.
Thank you. Director Hamm?
Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Kierd Barker.
Good afternoon, Chair Baca and Commissioners. My name's Carrie Barker and I'm a lead planner with Burnley County Planning and Development Services. This is Agenda Item 5A and it's case number SPR 2024-0002. And the request is to amend a sector development plan, the Viadell Sol Sector Development Plan. The County Planning Commission, in its advisory role, reviewed and recommended approval of the Viadell Sol Sector Plan at a public hearing that was held on September 9th, 2024. And the subject property is located on Section 16, which is located east of I-25. It's south of the airport, west of the city of Albuquerque, and north of Mesa del Sol. The zoning is SDVSM1 and SDVSOs. An applicant's request is to amend three sections of the sector plan. The first is to reflect a privately developed public water and wastewater system that's separate from the Albuquerque Water Authority System. The second change is to update the drainage section to reflect recent grading that happened north of the Tejeras Arroyo. And then finally, to clarify the zoning section to improve formatting and thus clarify permissive uses that are commercial and light industrial. The subject site is in the developing urban area of the comprehensive plan and it's also designated as a major employment center. This request is consistent with comprehensive plan policies regarding the developing urban area, air quality, noise, the developed landscape, and economic development. The applicant provided sufficient justification according to R11686 citing this request is more advantageous to the community because it allows commercial and light industrial development to occur in this plant area and that it will add development of jobs and more employment opportunities for the region. Getting into a little more details about these proposed amendments, the sector plan as adopted indicates that they will plug into the Water Authority water system and what they have proposed is instead a privately owned public water and wastewater system. There's an existing well and another well is planned to serve the site. The Water Authority provided a 2023 serviceability letter and that indicates that water and sewer infrastructure is not available to this property and that it's outside of the established service area. The proposed amendment also includes more detail about their operations, reporting, water conservation, and also stormwater runoff. The Second Amendment to the Drainage Chapter documents the existing site grading that has occurred. It makes it clear that the owner will maintain and manage this graded area until development occurs and provides detail about permanent stabilization for the site. The terrain management section also adds new techniques to manage impacts of the existing site grading and during the development period. The phasing chapter also has been modified to clarify there are no additional grading will occur prior to specific development request. And then the final change to the zoning chapter clarifies and makes the formatting more consistent with the zoning code. It adds a few new prohibited uses. It adds a reference to the M1 zone in the permissive use section. And finally, it adds a new permissive use, which is to allow outdoor storage of stacked shipping containers. And staff has determined that this is generally consistent with the character of a business park, light industrial type development. We have not had any comments from the public during the CPC stage or since then. And when this plan was originally adopted, we did receive letters of support from the South Valley Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. Staff recently received a copy of the serviceability letter from the Water Authority that stated July 20th, 2023. And I would like to introduce the letter to make the record for this case complete. This would be included in the after-action report. In conclusion, planning staff support CPC recommendation of approval. And this concludes my presentation. I stand for any questions.
I have a question. Can we get a copy of that water utility exhibit?
I could put it on the screen.
Thanks. Do you want a? We don't have a. Would you like a copy, Commissioner Benson?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think we need one more.
Madam Chair, I'm printing a few copies right now.
Okay. We're printing a few copies up here. Commissioner, oh, sorry, Vice Chair Olivas has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the main change that's being proposed to the sector plan is based entirely, basically, on this letter, right?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Which is not a part of the published version of this agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
So our process now is to go to the applicant or the public comment, Julianne? If that is all from the planning staff for right now? Do we have a?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any speakers?
Yes, so we have, from what I understand, we have the agent for the applicant, Mr. Ron Bohannon. And Mr. Solomon Sampson is also in the audience.
This will be fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can switch it up here.
It's on one. Is that right? Yeah. You need this?
I don't think so. I may, but I'm not. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Ron Bohannon, 5571 Midway Park Place. Do you need to swear me in?
We need to swear in. Madam Chair, this is not a quasi judicial hearing. It's legislative, so no.
Okay. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you today. I'd like to go through a real short PowerPoint presentation, very, very short. And before I start, the primary purpose was we've been trying to work with the Water Authority ever since the original adoption of the of the Sector Development Plan. When we started, Mesa del Sol was not as vibrant as it is today. There was a lot of capacity in the line that runs down University to Mesa del Sol. As we started developing, going through that, when we went to go tie into it, they said all of that water was reserved for Mesa del Sol. So there wasn't any water for Viadell Sol through that process. So we've been working with them over a number of years to try to work it out and we just, we couldn't get to a point that was equitable for both parties to be actually supplement the system that they would have to bring up from the valid floor. Our system has two permitted commercial wells that have been in operation. We have 408 acre feet of water rights that have been proven up. We actually pumped those wells to prove up those areas. And so we're, we need to move forward because it's a 500 acre sector plan. We estimate a full buildout will be 15,000 jobs for the county, totally within the county. We have missed numerous opportunities for employment in this area from everything, from Amazon to Home Depot, a few other folks. So it's time for us to go ahead and do our own system as well. So with that, let me just kind of walk through the PowerPoint presentation real quick. So again, this, the, the family is applicant is Horn Stewart LLC. A little bit about the family is they've owned this property through their family since the 50s. If you think about that, that predates the interstate. It predates the Water Authority. It predates a lot of things. This family has owned this property and will continue to own this property and so they've really invested in Albuquerque quite, quite well. The subject site is adjacent to the airport. We're a mile away from the cargo center in the airport, so we're highly desirable from a logistics standpoint. We are terrain challenged, but I have shown how you can actually grade this site and work it, work through this. And we have the Tejeras Arroyo that bisects the property and I'll speak a little bit to that as well, knowing the chair's background with Parks and Recreation as well. So again, we started out down this road to update the utilities, to allow us to go into a public water system that's privately owned. And what that means is that we're owning it, but we are serving the public. So it's a private system. The family owns a system in Arizona. We've developed several systems within the Burnley County and a lot in the state of New Mexico. So this is not a big lift for developing a water and sewer system in this area. And then as we were going through the process, staff recommended and we agreed with, let's update the zoning because there's been quite a few zone changes or zoning modifications to the, the area. So we said, okay, if we're going to come in and clean this up, let's add zoning to this as well. So, so those were the two primary functions through, through which we're in front of you today. What's shown today is a conceptual plan of our water system. And we have two wells, two existing wells. There's a well here and a well here. They're both already permitted with the State, State Engineers Office. We used well one and to prove up our 408 acre feet of water rights. And so we pumped 408 acre feet of water rights for a whole, whole year. So we know that there's there. We've done water quality testing on, on the water as well. This is our main transmission system for the water system and I'll, I'll walk through the sewer system as well here in a short area. We're setting the tanks up. We're going to match the Water Authority's water system. We just, as last week, we actually went back to the Water Authority and said, is there any change? And they said, no. And they said, okay, we're moving forward. But we will still match our tanks and everything else so that it is compatible with their system if the event, something else changes in the future, that we would be compatible with the Water Authority. This is the reuse line. So one of the things that's real important is reuse of water and water conservation. We've updated the sector plan for those water conservation measures and methods. We're going to use a state-of-the-art, what's called an MBR system. It's the same system we actually used on the pilot down at Broadway and I-25. That's a system that we came to this county commission about three years ago. That's a system that's totally self-contained. It's a water and sewer system, similar. The Water Authority couldn't provide system down there. We went to NMED in Burnley County. The water quality effluent that's coming out of that, out of that treatment system is almost drinkable. We could do one more step and it could actually, you could actually drink the water. It's that high of effluent quality. It's a state-of-the-art facilities that's used overseas. We've got, that particular brand has over 7,500 uses on it. The good thing is it's scalable, so we can start out small and grow to whatever we need. What we plan on doing is collecting all the water and then treating it and using it on the landscaping throughout the park, through that whole area. So we plan on using the water at least more than once, which is what usually happens with the Water Authority. We plan on using this several times through, through that project, process. This is the sewer collection system that we're proposing on that. We do have about 30 to 40 acres up on top of Mesa del Sol that's shown down in this location right through here. It's, we'll also be able to feed the system as well. So we went through the R16, 11686 criteria as we developed the sector plan amendments. One of the things I want to do is kind of back up and talk a little bit about drainage. Let me see how to go backwards. Yeah, cool. So on drainage, the Tejeras Arroyo, as we all know, is a pretty major arroyo. When we, we've actually got design plans, we've been working with AMAFCA for a number of years. I want to put the arroyo in perspective of how big this arroyo is. The Rio Grande River at flood stage, 100-year flood stage is 20,000 CFS. The Tejeras Arroyo, when it floods at the 100-year level, is 38,000 CFS. It's almost twice as large as the Rio Grande. So it is a very large arroyo during the event. And so what we have designed is hard-lined sides, but a soft bottom section and with, with landscaping on both sides and trails on both sides. We can't leave it natural because it's too large. So we do have to control it so that it doesn't meander more than what it is doing now. And it actually will have two drop structures on the site that is in the arroyo's plan for drainage as well, which will control the velocities and scour through this area. This is all above a sediment deposit area for AMAFCA that's just west of the interstate as well. So with that, we have worked with staff very closely. We went out to the public. We didn't have any comments from the public. Again, this is not housing development. This is purely industrial and manufacturing. We did a market study that's over five years old and at full buildout, we anticipate about 15,000 jobs that could be located in this, in this sector plan. And we have had numerous folks have approached us to develop this and without water, we just have not been able to accommodate them as well. So we can accommodate buildings as small as 10, 5, 5,000 square feet and we can actually get a million square feet under one roof. That's how, how large a parcel is. So we actually entertained Amazon going to this location as well at one time as well. So we've had quite a few, almost on a weekly basis, we get, we get inquiries about the property. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions from the commission. I also have Mr. Solomon Sampson here who is with the family. And if you need any questions answered by Mr. Solomon, he's willing, able, willing to be able to get up here and address any questions the commission may have. So. Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bohannon, if this were to be approved, what would be the timeframe for development?
For the development, so we've done quite a bit of work. It took us about six months to design the system and get it approved through Burnley County and the New Mexico Environmental Department for the system at the pilot at Rio Bravo and I-25. We anticipate it'll take about the same amount of time, about six months, and then probably about four months to construct the facilities, the tanks and, and the system. So I would say it would take most of 25 to get the system up and working. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
A follow-up on that. So when you say, describing what, when you call it the pilot at Rio Bravo?
I'm sorry, it's the Pilot Travel Center.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So if you go down at I-25, right where it starts to cross, to go over the river, there's a travel center that's owned by Pilot. At that time, we looked at trying to extend water and sewer front for the Water Authority. It was over two and a half miles and we drilled our own well, obtained water rights for that. And then we have an effluent system there. There, they, they have enough effluent that we meet all of landscape needs and it's, it's working quite well, so.
And so the size of that system is much smaller than the scale that you're talking about here with this property?
So, yeah, it's, it's quite a bit smaller. We're talking about, that one was a 200, it was about 150 GPM. Because we're really focusing towards more logistics, our domestic use is only about 450 GPM. Our fire demand is 4,000 GPM, but our domestic use is only 450 GPM. And if you think about it, if you've got, if you've got a large logistics company, then all you're really producing is those employees that are using the restroom in those facilities. You don't use it for food matting, factoring, and those type of things. So it's, it's not quite a lift as people think, so.
Because, because of the large size of the property, it, to me, it is, it was, the, the size of the property is, is so large.
Yeah.
But you're saying, say those numbers to me again, so the gallons.
450 gallons per minute is our domestic average daily demand.
Commissioner Barboa has a question?
Sort of just more of a comment. I thank you for presenting. I was able to meet with the family and I think you might want, we might want to hear from the owner, just because he makes good case, you know, they've owned the property for a long time. We talked about being good stewards of the land in New Mexico and I don't know that there's anything in writing here about what their future prospects might be, but I think, you know, I've learned in this that they have the right, when you have the right to do it and, and these guys, you know, we're not subsidizing their water, we're not, they're not asking for us to pass a big thing that's going to subsidize our access to water. They've actually created it and have been working. So I just, I, you know, I don't know if there's, if you could repeat a little bit about, you talked about water conservation and repurposed use water. If you could repeat a little bit of that to me, but so I'd say I think the approach and the work ethic of these folks has been to bring development and be able to make use of that land. This is right along the border of Commissioner Kessada's and my land, my district, District Three. And I think, you know, that land has been barren, but it, and needs some good development. So, yeah, I'd like to hear from the family member a little bit. And then if you, sir, could repeat a little bit what you talked about, repurposing water and the commitments there?
Sure. Let me address that question and I'll have Mr. Solomon Sampson come up and, and provide a little bit more history on the family. So what we are doing is we're collecting all, first of all, we went through and updated all of the conservation measures within the sector plan. We had a lot in there. We updated those to make sure that you had all the, the updated zero scape, all the correct plant species that have been, have evolved. We're going to be doing passive water harvesting with drainage and those type of things. But then the plant itself is set up to where we can treat that water and then with the reuse system, we will actually use that on the landscape areas within the balance of the park. So we plan on continuing to use this water over and over again. If we have a user that has not as much higher potable need for a manufacturer type use that's not a food industry, then we can also use that in that, that component as well. So with that, I'll have Mr. Sampson come up.
Chair Baca, Commissioners, thank you for having us here today. My name is. Chair, Baca, Commissioners, thank you for having us here today. My name is Solomon Sampson. I represent the Horn family. We've had this property for, like you said, for almost seventy years. We've been in the community. We've owned other assets in the community. We've been trying to develop this property and we've had a lot of interest from groups that have wanted to have something ready to go. If you understand the, the business side of this, most groups are looking site selectors and things like that, they have a checkbox. They go through and say, hey, what we need is we need utilities, we need the entitlements done, and can we put something on the property within twelve months to eighteen months? Our problem is, is we haven't been able to get through the water issue. And so we've had to pass up on a lot of opportunities to bring economic development to the area. As a family, we, we like to get back to the community. We see what we're doing as an opportunity to bring jobs, to bring tax dollars, especially in the county. The county has been really good to us. They've been supportive along the way. They've even offered us a PID. That's kind of a reimbursement for some of our improvements that we'll be doing to help get this going because they see this as an opportunity so close to an airport, so close to a freeway interchange. It is a great site for logistics, warehousing and things like that. So as a family, we're excited to get something going. I've, I got an email fifteen minutes before this started with a group that's, that's asking for interest and potentially interested in doing something. There's, there's, there's groups out there. We just need to have something ready for them to say they can check those boxes and they can move forward. Water Authority, we've tried multiple times, bless their souls. They've got a tough job because they've got a lot of regional improvements that they need to have done. We can't wait. We're lucky. We're a unique situation where we have wells already permitted. We have four-hundred-and-eighty acre-feet of water. And so we can move forward and get something done and bring some jobs. And that's what we're looking to do. So thank you. Any questions that I could answer specifically?
Please mention again, you have, so you have water rights?
Mm-hmm.
And you have gone through the state engineer for approval of your wells?
Yep, we pumped them. We'd have to go through the state still to get approval to do a private system. And that's the next step after we get this approval. So there is additional steps we have to take, but we do have the water rights that we've proven up and we have the wells.
But you still have the step of going to the state engineer for a private system, you say?
NMED, yeah, let me, let me, so, so the, the wells have already been permitted with the state engineer's office. We will do, we rehab one of the wells and we will go to the state engineer for that. But the overall water system and sewer system goes through the New Mexico Environmental Department and Burnley County. So it's, it's a dual review by Burnley County and the New Mexico Environmental Department. And that should take roughly six, six months to get through.
And you need the, or maybe this is for staff, but you need a sector plan amendment prior to going through that approval process?
So for the New Mexico Environmental Department, we need, the, we needed that denial letter from, from the Water Authority. For the sector plan, it was set up with just the Water Authority and it didn't allow the private system. And so that's the intent of the amendment is to allow us to install the private system, private-public system.
Okay. Vice Chair Lealas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's really unfortunate that this ten-page letter was not in the original packet because that's, that's a lot to take in in just a couple of minutes here. I've been the Water Authority Board Chair for two years. This is the first time I've heard of this project or this property. So, you know, I realize that, that you've been working at the, at the staff level with the utility, but, you know, I think that there are, as, as policymakers and as folks that, that hold the, the employees at the utility accountable, I think that reaching out to board members might be a useful activity. This is certainly, I totally agree with your, your vision on this, of this being a really important parcel in the county. When you look at the development of Mesa del Sol and how this fits in with that, I definitely see where you're going with that. But Mesa del Sol, I don't have their exact letter before me and, you know, didn't have a chance to see this beforehand, but they probably had a letter very similar to this when they began their development. Every developer gets the same letter basically in, in one form or another that outlines, you know, some of the existing infrastructure and the needs and, you know, all of these things. Do not necessarily say that the water utility cannot service the property. It says that the developer should fund, shall fund a master plan study, which Mesa del Sol has done. They're doing an update on that now. Most developers that, that work with the utility do that. That's just the way the utility does business. I realize that we can have conversations about what they do in Arizona or what they do in Texas that are, you know, quite different from, from how things are at the water utility. But that is the process that every developer that works with the water utility follows. And this letter is not substantially different, in my opinion, from any letter that any other developer receives. So again, I'm a little concerned that we didn't have more time to actually review what this letter says, although I think that it's, it's a fairly standard letter that outlines what's nearby and what responsibilities the developers would have to both do a study and then because of the no-net expense policy, construct that infrastructure and, and essentially give it to the, to the utility. I don't see that being all that different from what you're doing in the sense that, you know, you're building your own wells, you're building your own reservoir, you're building your own transmission system. But you didn't actually do the study to see what the costing would be. Maybe you did, but I'm just not really seeing that, that this was pursued beyond getting the letter and saying we can't do it.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, if I may, we did do the study. We ended up having to supplement the whole system to the tune of just a little under twenty million dollars. We were also looking at bringing four thousand GPM up from the valley floor for, for the system and making redundant connections to Mesa del Sol. We tried to work with Mesa del Sol as an equity position to say, look, it's going to help you. And we couldn't, they wouldn't, wouldn't give us the time of day pretty much. We, we have literally taken the last five to six years trying to work through this process that was equitable. We are going to spend maybe seven million dollars on something that they were wanting us to spend twenty million on to do. And a lot of it was system improvement, system-wide improvements that just, were just not equitable for, for the property. So yes, we, we have.
If I may follow up. So who will maintain this system?
So it'll be maintained and that's all part of, that's outlined through the New Mexico Environmental Department is that it will be maintained by the, the property owners through that area. And we have numerous systems in the county that are similar. So.
And if I may, Madam Chair, what will happen when these wells go dry? Because they, you know, eventually we're, we're seeing region-wide declines in aquifer levels. What will happen at, at that point?
So actually, I, I don't mean to contradict you, but since the Water Authority started using, reusing the water in the river and started decreasing their pumping, we've seen rebounds in the aquifer levels of almost seventy feet in different parts of the area. We, as part of our demonstration to the New Mexico Environmental Department, will do a hundred-year drawdown schedule to show what that looks like for the hundred years, which is the, part of the regulation.
I guess you're, you're relatively close to the valley floor here, so that, that makes sense. You, you would have a pretty high water table.
And the thickness of, if I may continue, the thickness of the aquifer is about nine thousand feet in this area, of which about fifteen hundred to two thousand is freshwater. Below that is brackish water. The nice thing about this system, which the Water Authority hasn't gotten to yet, is brackish systems. They are coming. You will see them probably five to ten years. You'll start seeing them. There, there's about a hundred and fifty systems operational in the United States, fifteen to twenty in Texas. We have one in New Mexico. But brackish water is what we call the new oil. It is something that will help us meet our water demands from a statewide and specifically countywide moving forward for, for my grandchildren. So.
If I may, Madam Chair. I, I think what I was getting at there is, is the water utility has a very diverse portfolio in the sense of there's surface water diversions, they're coming from San Juan Chama water, those are supplemented, or sometimes we would say they are supplementing, groundwater pumping, and then they have non-potable reuse, which is also part of, of what you're doing. Because this doesn't include a surface water component or anything like that, this is relying entirely on what I would describe as our savings account, right, which is our, our aquifers. And so I realize that for your individual position as a property owner, one property owner, one developer, this seems like a unlimited resource as you described. There's nine thousand feet of, of depth there. From my perspective as a, as a regional policymaker and looking at the region-wide issues here, the problem with that kind of piecemeal use of the aquifer system and water resources at large is it doesn't allow for, A, the scale that the water utility has to braid and blend all those different sources, but to, you know, sort of ensure the conservation piece because there is, you know, the, the utility is accountable to a, a board that is staffed by elected officials that represent constituents in the region. I just, I keep going back to, I, I have some concerns about the, the private water system who will ultimately end up operating that fifty years down the road when I'm gone and you're gone and, and nobody's talking about that. Because I think that we just know with, with climate change, with the ridification in the region, this is a finite resource, even if you got nine thousand feet of it. We've seen places in, in the region where they're burning through aquifers very rapidly. And so it's just something that, I, I don't think that you all are trying to be profligate here. I don't think that you're proposing, you know, golf courses and huge water demands, which is what makes this so, so tricky, right? Because I see where you're going. I think you have the right vision and, and the right mentality that, that fits in with, with what we want to do, with what our comp plan talks about and water conservation, water resources and kind of smart development. But at the same time, by going in this private utility direction, I think that, that we're also leaving ourselves open to kind of just saying, we're not really regulating the, the water side of this, which is probably our most important resources as a region. So, thank you.
Commissioner, the family shares your concerns. They really do. We, we've, as of, as he mentioned before, we went last week and tried to meet with staff to say, hey, look, is there an opportunity? Because we would rather have a municipality thing if that was, if that was on the table. Because you're in policy, because you have the position you do, I would highly recommend you relook at the, the no-net expense because that's what's causing and bringing this to the table. And we could go all day and talk about that. I don't want to, but I, I hope that you'll, in your position, reevaluate that. For us, we as a family have owned other water systems. It's, it's a little bit of a regulatory hoop to jump through, right? You have to do the testing, you have to do the reporting. And, and we know that's what's coming for this, but we felt like we've tried and even as of last week, tried to see what was available, see if there was a possibility to make something work. Because the regional improvements, especially now that they've done the additional study for Mesa del Sol, they are, their eyes are wide open to the regional issues that are going on. And that's going to make it even more difficult for someone like us to get something done. We're just in a unique situation because we have rights. We own the rights to this water. We've proven them up. We have the wells. We've permitted those. We're in a unique situation that allows us to move forward and bring some economic development. So, thank you.
I have a comment, actually, probably three key points here. I, I too am concerned that I wasn't able to read the Water Utility Authority or a letter or talk to Mark Sanchez. I also sit on the, the Water Authority Board. It would be really good for that board to be able to have this discussion or some sort of a study session or something like that. So I'm a little concerned about approving this today. The, the second thing, not that I'm against it though. I mean, what I'm, what I'm trying to tell you is I needed more information. The second thing is, is that we have since, since you've first owned this property, we've had a comprehensive plan and then a recent re, as you know, redo of our comp plan. And in that comp plan, we spent a lot of time talking about looking at water availability region-wide between the city and the county as we make these kinds of planning decisions. And I think that's a, a really important difference that, of where we are in, in time and space. So hence the conversation at, at the Water Authority that I think needs to occur. And then the third thing seems minor to some, but the Tejeras Arroyo that Ron, that Mr. Bohannon brought up. The Tejeras Arroyo is one of the two largest arroyos, as you said, the Calabacius on the west side and this one. And if my recollection serves, it was part of an arroyo's facility plan where we talked about these major arroyos and the treatment of those arroyos with setbacks. So my question, maybe for staff or you as the, as the agent, have you looked at that? And I think that's a, an adopted, I know it is. It's an adopted plan for the, the city of Albuquerque and in the protection of our natural arroyos. And so I'm a little concerned about the channelization that you described and, and, and I need more conversation about that. And I see Commissioner Barbo has her hand up, but if you had an answer to that question.
Madam Chair, thank you. There's a couple of questions I'd probably want to go down towards. So on the arroyo and comparing the Calabacius to this arroyo, the Calabacius and this arroyo are going to be similar. What you have on the Calabacius is you have a series of drop structures that have been put in. You don't see them because they're buried, but they actually function. And then you have natural treatment in between that. The, the flow on the Calabacius is roughly about sixteen thousand CFS, just to put it in perspective. This is again, three times that, that flow. The, the, we have, we actually have two points. We have where it comes into our property and then we have the exit point where it goes out of our property where it crosses the interstate. So we have to make those two connect. At thirty-eight thousand CFS, it is a very dynamic arroyo. So it, you have to treat it very carefully. And so we have done that with a soft bottom channel. We have lined the sides with, and it'll be colored concrete of, of some sort. We've also working, and the Tejeras has, I want to say, six drop structures proposed on it, none of them which have been built yet. Two of those drop structures are on this property. So as this property develops, we will put one on the west side and we'll actually put one at our east property line with AMAFCA on that. We have thirty percent plan sets for both of those, for both of those drop structures as well through that, through that area. So we have taken that. It's just, then you have to control the channel. And the Calabacius was fortunate enough that it was, had steep enough banks on it that you could control it with setbacks and everything else. We don't have that luxury here because of it, of the velocity and the sheer force of the Rio Grande. The other good thing with the soft bottom is, is what we found when we actually proved up our water rights is this is a very good area for natural water percolation. We're seeing that there's not, which is surprising, there, there's only a couple of places in the city limits where you get natural ground recharge. This is one of those areas to do that. So the channel is designed that way for natural recharge. We still have to control the velocities through that area. We've actually made provisions for the five-hundred-year flow event on this as well because it's so large. So we've done that as well. So that is how we're handling the arroyo through that area.
And just a follow-up question and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Barbo. So this approval of this sector plan amendment, does it hold in place this, this drawing that we saw as an exhibit? I mean, because you're narrowing it substantially in that drawing. So it, does this sector plan amendment approval, I mean, it's a drainage function of this approval of the sector plan, but?
Madam Chair, if I may, Madam Chair, this, the concept hasn't changed from the original approval. This has always been the concept.
In the original sector plan?
Exactly, from the original sector development plan. So nothing has changed on this part of the sector plan.
Commissioner Barbo. And I have to say, we have a, we have a time crunch here, so I want to interject here. We have a four o'clock meeting and it's ten till four right now, but we want to continue on with the commission's questions and see where we, where we land. So just a time check. Commissioner Barbo?
Thank you, Ma, thank you, Madam Chair. I enjoyed the conversation. I too serve on the Water Utility Authority Board. I think these folks have done their due diligence. I'm seeing that, you know, through the AMAFCA, they, I believe that the, the Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor. the Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor. Um, and, and they're not asking for subsidies. I guess I don't, um, maybe I'm not thinking of apples to or- apples to apples and more of apples to oranges, but I think, you know, we approve, um, such huge subsidies for out-of-the-country businesses to develop in a similar location. Um, and not, and I feel like we, and I understand that difference is private and, um, but I just think, you know, these guys have done the work. They've been waiting, hoping they could connect during the due diligence. Um, so I hate to add, I feel like we offer all the, the, the hoops, not just so for these reasons. And I feel like they've done their work to get through there and, and this is another one of those places where, um, you know, so if folks really need more information, I won't go fully against it. But Nick, maybe you could explain and share to us a little bit about this, what the CPC, um, conversation and vote was for this property? And I believe there was some conditions and what does that mean to come out of, um, a CPC with, uh, approval, but with conditions?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, um, this was reviewed and recommended by the County Planning Commission for approval. Uh, that was a unanimous vote on their part to recommend approval of this. Um, while I have the mic and I'll be brief, just a few points I wanted to make. Uh, the letter in question, that was provided to the county on November eighth. So we're giving it to you at our earliest possible, uh, juncture. Um, I, just also for context, this is an amendment of an existing entitlement. So these folks, they're not asking to change any zoning that they've already been granted. Uh, they're not asking for any other, uh, water use than they were already previously approved for. And the diversion of the underground water was approved by, uh, the state of New Mexico, who has authority to do that type of work. Um, so just from the staff perspective, there's not, there's not a reason that would be germane to stand in the way of recommending approval for this. Um, so appreciate the discussion. The concerns I think are very valid. Uh, I also think that the folks that are standing before you, they've, they've done what they could in the process uh, and within the constraints that they have as far as, um, engineering, financial or other, to be able to accommodate the needs of the development that they already have approval for. Um, and to be able to meet the county's requirements, water conservation, uh, acceptable grading and drainage plan, things of that nature. Uh, so I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Wester Levis and then, uh, Commissioner Benson.
Uh, I'd like to move a deferral to the February eleventh zoning meeting. Only because that is our next regularly scheduled zoning meeting.
I, I'll second that and I think we can have some discussion and, um, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and actually, I don't know, this might, Madam Chair, this might, question might be for Commissioner Levis as the, um, Chair of the Water Authority Board or Mr. Bohannon. But, um, given this letter, given the, the, um, inability of the Water Authority to, uh, meet your needs, how often, uh, is this the appropriate path to then bring it forward here once you receive this letter? Or is it more appropriate to fight the, um, the Water Utility Authority Department's position and raise it to the board level to Commissioner Levis's, uh, concern?
I, I'm going to answer that. Madam Chair, Commissioner, let me ask, answer that question. It may be very blunt. Um, what we are asking for today is to be able to, uh, do self-help. Is to be able to go in and say, we can put in our own system under the regulations of the state of New Mexico, Burnley County and the New Mexico Environmental Department. We want our own self-help. I have worked with the Water Authority from its creation and prior to that. There is a huge disconnect between staff and the board. From, and it really, uh, goes around net zero policy. And it would require a lot more discussion with the development community and with the board of what has, has gone on with the Water Authority. The Water Authority uses the no-net expense. Um, you look at, uh, Western Albuquerque Land Holdings, they invested thirty million dollars, but they still have another thirty million dollars to invest and it's been, it's been trials and tribulations. Quail Ranch on the, on the west side has not developed because of the no-net expense. Um, they don't have the water rights. When you say, let's go take it to the board with staff, um, I know Commissioner Baca has been in that position. When you start arguing with staff, all of a sudden now things start really slowing down. And so why we would love to be part of the, the water board, uh, with, in front of the water board and to do that, I don't think it will actually change anything at the end of the day. I think at the end of the day, we'll be here in front of you saying, all we're asking for is self-help. And for us to be able to go use the water rights we own, the wells that we have permitted, and to bring economic development to Burnley County. So I'm, I, I hate to be any more blunt with that and I'll, and I've been that blunt with Mark Sanchez as well.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bohannon, uh, Madam Chair. It seems to me that, uh, they have, uh, gone through all the requirements. Now, the only thing what they could have done in addition to is to, uh, ignore the, the letter of the staff and, um, try to undermine their position and go to the board. But then that still might have brought it straight here, which is the next step legally. Um, I feel like they, they have done their, uh, due diligence more than, more than so. Um, they're in a tough position. They can't receive help that they've been asking for. They can provide it themselves. They just need the go-ahead to do it. And, and they've already got all of the permissions otherwise. And so I think it's fifteen thousand jobs. I mean, the more jobs we could create, the better the affluence of the city. So, uh, I think it's appropriate, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Can I make another statement? We do have a couple of deals that are on the table and if this gets setback, uh, those will have to be passed over as well. Um, time is of the essence on these, so thank you.
I guess I will ask this question of staff. Um, you know, we have a motion to defer, so we're not saying no. We're, we're saying that we really do feel like we want your development to work and we need to engage in this conversation about this finite resource, which is water. I mean, e- even, and that's been talked about. So if we were to defer and have more conversations with you all and, including the Water Authority on this particular project, how, what would that, what is your schedule? How would that impact? And actually, I want to hear from the Planning Director real quick on that because we, we're count, you know.
So, so Madam Chair.
We're at a point where we need to.
We think, if, if the Water Authority changes their position and it's more equitable, we'll be back here in a heartbeat. All we're asking for today is to be able to do self-help. That's what we're asking for. The Water Authority has actually given comments that, that this will be a private system. They don't want, they don't want us to go back to the Water Authority. That was their official comments back to staff when we made these amendments. Because we had it set up either or. We had it set up as a private or we could tie into the Water Authority. And the Water Authority said, no, you, you go private. That was their official comments. All we're asking for is the permission to go do what we can do. That's all we're asking for. If something changes, and I'll be the first one at the Water Authority Board if we can make change in this community. Because second-generation engineer raising third, fourth-generation engineers and operators, I'm not going anywhere. Water is our life and, and we're doing it. But, but the net zero policy is the issue with the Water Authority and our community and the finite systems. It's a complex, it's a complex problem.
It is. And, and our role though is to approve a, a sector plan that, that we are understanding all of those factors, including your private property rights, including creation of jobs, including the finite water system that we are dealing with. So it, it's, it's complex on our side of the, of the street too. And I want to hear from the, uh, Planning Director.
Forgot. Uh, Madam Chair, on the, the, the question of policy requirements for connection to the Water Authority, there's not a county provision that would require, and I'll defer to Mr. McGregor on this point, but there's not a provision that would require this developer to connect to the Water Authority system. Um, they could, they can, as long as they provide an acceptable source of domestic water and wastewater disposal, they would meet the requirements of county code. Uh, sort of more to the, the point of the Water Authority, the, the Water Authority did review this case, um, for comment. Uh, they did not provide any adverse comments to the request. Um, and in our discussions with Water Authority staff, we're also not aware of a policy provision from the Water Authority side that would require this development to connect to the municipal system. Um, yeah, I, again, I think that Mr. McGregor is, is the better person to speak to these specific points. But, uh, as we're considering a zoning question today with an element of the, the water question as well, um, the regulations that dictate how those are to be evaluated, through our analysis, this application meets those requirements for approval. Um, and so we would, we would just, uh, remind folks that the Planning Commission vetted this. They did recommend approval as well. And there's not anything that we can point to that would indicate, uh, another decision coming our way.
Well, one, one thing I was, I will correct you on, um, Director Ham. I mean, I, I understand all of that, but we did pass a comprehensive plan where we are asking ourselves as we look at zone changes, land use decisions is how we phrased it in there, um, to understand the climate change, the water, um, availability that we have here in the region. So the, the, there is a, there is that.
Understood, Madam Chair, yeah.
Vice Chair Levis.
Um, I, I would comment that the reason for this change is actually because the current sector plan, the sector plan that's in effect says that development of this property will proceed with water utility service for sewer and water. So the current requirement is that there shall be, uh, water utility service. So the, the statement that you made that, that, that there is no requirement is sort of at the general level of going in and pulling a counter permit. We're talking about a sector plan and the specific amendment to the sector plan is to remove that requirement that was, I, I guess that wasn't on the commission at that time, but in twenty sixteen, that was agreed upon by the, by the family, by the development team and by the county, uh, to, to put that in there and now we're taking it out. So, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know that that's the case. And then secondly, I just wanted to put on my Water Authority cap here real quick and say, uh, in some of the discussions that I've been hearing about Mesa del Sol, which, which I realize is a substantially larger, uh, development than this, just acre-wise. Um, some of the changes that are being discussed are, are things like diverting water from the, uh, Montgomery trunk in the Northeast Heights to Mesa del Sol because there's excess capacity there and they need to, you know, route that water, uh, where it is, where it's needed, where it's growing. Um, and it's unfortunate that there, that the developers at Mesa del Sol haven't been, um, amenable to having those conversations because it seems like some kind of a cost share there would be beneficial for everyone. Um, because I believe that the likely outcome is that that would be put on the TID. And so, you know, that is less, uh, less resources for that development, potentially, if, if it works out that way. So, um, the, the bottom line is I think that there's a lot changing there, especially with that update to the, to the master plan for water at Mesa del Sol. And, and, um, I'm not sure the door is completely closed. And again, I wish that we would have had a little more time, uh, to, you know, talk with Director Sanchez, talk with Mr. Chavez over at Mesa del Sol and see if there is, uh, opportunities for everyone to work together rather than sort of everyone go their own way.
Madam Chair, if I might, um, Commissioner Levis, just to clarify my statement about the county's provisions, there's no provision preventing the county from amending the sector plan. There's, so I underst- the point taken on the fact that the sector plan says that now, but approving the change would not be in conflict with adopted county policy or Water Authority policy. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner, uh, Benson, sorry.
Thank you. Actually, I'll defer to, I think, I do have a question for you, but, um, it looks like.
Oh, I apologize. Commissioner Barboa, you had your hand up. I apologize. Did you have a question, Commissioner Barboa?
Yes, thank you. I mean, just a comment. I, I, I think, you know, I feel like I'm, I'm always a, on the same page about water and that, that space and the time it takes for us is more, you know, water's so important. But we're talking about everything I feel like we've learned and said is important. This is, this isn't even Mesa del Sol because Mesa del Sol is way up on this hill where this is right, um, close to the airport. If we think about if Amazon would have been able to build here, what it would have meant between the traffic between airport and way west side and the water use there or any of those developments. So, I mean, and I, I guess I think if this, you know, hearing the steps that it's been through, including the Water Utility Authority, I think if the Water Utility Authority had been worried at this point, we would have heard something about it. Um, so I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not excited to vote for a deferral, but if folks really feel they need that, um, information, I think these people, um, this family and these, the groups have done every step along the way that we asked them to do, including what it would take to change a sector plan. Um, those are the steps we set in front of them and they're going through them. And this is, um, the last step in this process and, and, um, and I don't know what it's going to mean. I guess I'm interested to see what would be the difference when we go to the water or what will be the process. Will we have to bring this? Since the Water Utility Authority isn't bringing it to us as an issue, um, that we'll be bringing that then, um, to that and what that will mean. And, and February isn't that long away. Um, yet the folks have been doing the work that they need to. So I'm, you know, I'm disappointed that we will have to have a further step when it feels like the, like folks make, have been at the front of this. But, um, so I just wanted to comment on that once again. I think they've taken the steps needed and, um, I hate to add more barriers when it feels like, like all the checkboxes have been approved and we're not. And this is, I mean, when we subsidize things, I'm super worried about it. But when, um, folks, when we're not subsidizing them and they're well within their rights that state and local government has set forward, um, that where it starts to feel burdensome. So, um, thank you. Just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I have a, a comment there and, and we are running into our next meeting. And so I want to propose something, I guess, ask again of the developer if you'd be willing to come to the table with us if we were to defer this. What you have here is, um, you don't have the full complement of a five-member commission because we're lacking a very important member, which is the representative, um, right in this district, District Two. And so if the, if we can defer this, we have the opportunity to continue to talk and answer some of these questions. If it, if the approval, if it fails, we're in a different, um, situation. And so I'm, I'm asking you if you would be willing to work with us. I know, um, Mr. Bohannon reached out to some of us I was not able to, um, to meet and, and get this kind of information from your, your agent. But, um, and that may be my fault because we didn't, weren't able to meet. But I will ask of you, um, if, if we could defer this and I don't think you have a, well, I'll stop there.
Madam Chair, let me, let me do, go on record that we actually spent a year going back and forth with, uh, the representatives from Mesa del Sol with a memo of understanding, trying to go through and to, um, decipher what was going to be where and who was going to pay for what. Um, in their development agreement that they currently have, they're required to do this line off of, uh, Broadway and bring it up to this area to bring the regional improvement. We offered to go in and help share that cost, um, and they tried to burden us with all of it. And so it doesn't make sense as a developer, someone is trying to make something happen to take all of our profit margin that we would make off the property and put it into a regional improvement. Not that we don't want to help, um, we do. Um, but we have, uh, been banging our heads against the wall trying to get something done. We've met with staff multiple times. Um, we, we've tried. And so it's really hard when you ask us to do a deferral based upon, um, the fact that we've already jumped through all these hoops. We've, we've, we've been doing what you've asked us to do. We, we've met with the people. We, we've, uh, I met with Mark Sanchez directly and tried to see what we could get done. Um, it's not like we haven't tried. So I just want to make sure that that's on record, that we have been, um, a- and now that the, we offered even pay and, and share in the study that Mesa del Sol had to do and Mesa del Sol said, no, we're going to do this and we're going to do this without you. And they started excluding us from everything. So we have a really hard time when, uh, when our, when our, um, success is based upon another competing developer. Um, that's not a fair place to be. And so we, we can control our own destiny. We have our own water rights. We own our land. Um, this is America.
This is America. So make that statement. Thanks.
Madam Chair. I, I do not support a deferral. However, I, I would ask and I would support, I do support the desire to understand more. I want to make that clear. Could I propose that we move a deferral up instead of being into the next quarter? Can we do it by the next board meeting? Have a zoning meeting before the next scheduled board meeting this month? So that would give two, two weeks, which is still longer, I think, than they have deserved. But we should be able to get enough information in two weeks. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Levis. Four weeks.
So that would be December 10th?
Right.
Is that a friendly amendment to the?
I'd, I'd be, I'd be open to that. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So there's a, an amendment to the motion on the table of deferral to December 10th as a separate. Well, it's, it's been moved and seconded already, but this is just a friendly amendment. So I think we're okay with, with that, with both first and second agreeing. And we look forward to talking to you more too about this. So I guess I will call the question, please. Real call for Madam Clerk.
Is, am I on?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
All right. I wasn't sure what you'd said. Chair Barboia, I mean Chair Baca, I'm sorry. Vice Chair Barboia. Oh, Levis. I'm looking at the wrong.
Yes.
Commissioner Barboia.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Thank you. So called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. So we will be hearing back from you, look forward to talking. And that is it for our, let's see, the announcement of the next zoning meeting will be Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, here in these chambers. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.